My name is Larry, our last name Smith. My mailing address is 7837 Ocean Gateway, Easton. I'm a resident of Easton for sixty-five and a half years. I have prepared the history and meaning of the Confederate flag for, and I have ten copies, one for each council member, Mike Pullen, the attorney, reporter, whoever you want to. Who do I present these to?
Why don't you give a quick quote?
Okay, Paul. Hang on to one of them. As many of you know, and have heard possibly, the Confederate flag has, does have meaning. It has been used, unfortunately, in a lot of cases, and abused, as many things have been. As you know, you can take anything you would choose to and misuse it, and the Confederate flag has been. But what does the, what does that statue mean here in Talbot County? What about those names of our local folks that are attached to it, that sacrificed whatever side of the war they were on? Nobody in this room had anything to do with any of it. But it is our history of Talbot County where we have come, as the other monuments that sit on the courthouse lawn of Frederick Douglass. Hey, that was very important to us too, isn't it? And so is the third one, the Vietnam one. So I ask you, after you have read this sufficiently, think about what it really means, the names of the families that are here that have made a contribution. Just like you spoke earlier, in the council chambers, what Talbot Countyans did, Talbot Countyans did, there was blood that was spilled. Whatever side they were on, it was part of our history. Don't, please don't let our children know what our history is and the names that are there, just like the names there on that Vietnam monument. If you go, where does it stop if you allow the media to do what it's doing to represent only one side of something and tell? What have we accomplished? It's time that we say no. Hey, this is, this is part of our history. This is what happened. We're going to preserve our history so that others behind us involve. I would hate to see the Vietnam monument, that's something near and dear to my heart as I serve. I spilled blood on that land. Vietnam, these Purple Heart, Bronze Star of the Navy Device for Valor, for actions that day. Hey, that means a lot to me, my little boys. I honor Mayor Willie, who had a Desert Storm parade. Hey, that was very important. There was no parade for the Vietnam veterans. So I ask you for your cooperation, consideration, and due diligence, and hey, the good book says thus is written, well, read it.
My name is Holly Wright. I live at 294 Bentley Avenue in St. Michael's, and I thank you for receiving public comment on this important topic. My name is Holly Wright, and I'm a Talbot County resident of St. Michael's. I am speaking on behalf of removing the Reconstruction Era statue from the grounds of our Talbot County courthouse. As a resident of Talbot County, it's not my concern what flags tie and what statues adorn private property. As a citizen of Talbot County, however, it is very much my business what appears on the county's public property and what has a place of honor there. While I was not born in Talbot County, I'm a member of a very important sorority fraternity, the Army Brats of America. This life forced me on behalf of my country to make any place my home, and as such, I will claim exactly that. We're here because the NAACP has proposed that the council take action on the Reconstruction Era statue. I can only imagine, but do not presume to know, the depths of the offense that statue has caused its members over the years. In terms of the merits of preserving the location of the statue, I've read the various arguments on this issue, and I appreciate the subtleties of the sport of historical interpretation as much as the next person. But to assert that the Missouri Compromise, the Fugitive Slave Law, and the Institution of Slavery were not fundamental to secession or run up to the Civil War in a cause which is honored by the statue is ridiculous. The statue is quite sentimentally titled, "The Talbot Boys," and it brings to mind the young men who are fodder of politicians in any war and their descendants who seek to find meaning in their loss. The presence of this statue on the public property is evidence that history is not written by the winners or losers, but by the social and political elites of the day and the illusions that comfort them. I would like to speak on behalf of other Talbot boys whose descendants will not be here to honor them or speak on their behalf. They were born here, native sons and daughters, but they were sold south to be ground down on the plantations of Georgia. The CSA which is honored by the statue sought to preserve the asset value of their human flesh, so let the descendants lick their wounds and honor their forbears on private property, and let my county not honor their efforts. I thank God for their failure. Thank you.
My name is Drake Ferguson. I live in Travis, 29299 Maple Avenue. And coincidentally, I was a political science history major in college, raised in the Midwest. Although my family was in the South, they were Scottish descendants, and if you go up to the Pennsylvania Memorial and look at the base, there are all of the names inscribed to the folks who died, gave their names for the northern states. There's not a Ferguson among them, so evidently, all of my folks were on the southern side. When you go to Gettysburg though, you really only find a couple of monuments to the southern people who died there. One, of course, is for North Carolina, which would have been my folks, and the other is for Robert E. Lee. Now, at the point in time that we decided to put that monument there, it was deemed to be good, worthy, there was discussion at the time. But one of the things we need to strive for in this conversation is fair and balanced. We're never all of us going to agree on exactly the same thing, so what we try to do is come up with a balance, one to the other. If we have one side represented, we also, coincidentally, need to have the other side represented. With the Frederick Douglass Memorial, I think we pretty much have come close to hitting that kind of balance. In the, in the run-up to the adoption of the Bill of Rights and the Constitution, there were a series of discussions printed in the publications called the Federalist Papers. And in there, the founding fathers talked about majority faction, how you could have a majority of people involved in discussion and have them be wrong. And as we structured things, one of the things that we put in place was one house of our bicameral government, where every state was equally represented regardless of the size, and that would be the Senate. In this particular instance, I think that the lawn out in front of Talbot County courthouse has reached a balance. They have a monument representing both sides. If there needs to be another monument, we'll certainly even gather here and talk about that. But the point in time that we're going to start putting memorials in places and then coming back and taking them back, somehow or another, that is fundamentally offensive to me. So I would ask that as you take a look at this, you really are faced with a question of balance. The most difficult and the trickiest thing that any group of people can ever do is to try to strike a balance, and I thank you for your attention.
Terry. Here he is. 6926 Reliance Road, Federalsburg, Maryland. I'm not a citizen in Talbot County, but I do love our local history, and as part of that, I started to circulate a petition online through change.org, and this petition asks that the council please keep the statue in place where it is. Awareness of the petition was spread by people who support the monument, as well as through the Save the Talbot Boys Facebook page, and the people who signed the online petition could then also share the petition with like-minded people, people who supported keeping the monument in place. The petition began on September 24th. As of today, there are 1,034 supporters. The petition contains comments from people who signed, who wanted to sign and wanted to offer their opinions on the topic. Others did not. So within this petition, which I will respectfully present to the council, there is, the first part is the comment section. There is a part here with a yellow tab that also gives you all of the names and addresses. There were some useful suggestions in the comment section. I do ask that the council, at your leisure, please read through these. You'll find these very interesting. Some of the suggestions were to, that the statue does, as the previous speaker alluded to, offer a historical contrast to the Douglass statue. It does give an element of balance. There were suggestions to build a Union monument alongside, citing the historical nature of the existing statue. Also, there were suggestions to market this piece of history that we've created on the courthouse grounds and use it as a marketing tool to help the businesses downtown to draw more people to the area. So I respectfully will present the petition to the council and ask that you consider all of the comments of those contained within them. Thank you.
I'm Libby Dawkins of Amy Elizabeth Kelly Dawkins. 11 North Thoroughgood Lane, Easton, Maryland, Talbot County, Maryland, et cetera. Now, the one thing I want to say right off the bat is, we've got over thirty thousand people in Talbot County. I realize they're not all adults, but this room should be overflowing. We should need the high school. There's, really, I know of my own history that many are working, and it's impossible, but onward and upward. I speak in favor of keeping the statue there. I'm delighted to see Mr. Douglas is there and the Vietnam, and I'm sure I missed, and I cannot, I'm not a scholar, I cannot give all the history that others have. But I am also in favor of a Union statue being had with some thought given to it, paid for by the county, because you said county funds paid for the other?
No, ma'am, Libby, that was private funds.
Oh, I misunderstood you, sir. Private funds, well, okay. I consider my private funds part of the county funds. (laughter) 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 (laughter)
Good evening. My name is Terry Kleima. My address is 14 Chapel Manor Court, Perry Hall, Maryland. I am not a Talbot County citizen, obviously, but I'm here as representative of the Maryland Division of Sons of Confederate Veterans. I was listening about the statue and the need for a Union statue, and I would like to challenge our counterparts, the Sons of Union Veterans, to raise some funds to build a statue like we did. But in any event, on a serious note, I've been following the issue quite closely, and it's bothered me that I've heard the Confederates maligned as traitors. And I wanted to clear up a few facts. First of all, the Confederate veterans are recognized as U.S. veterans by various appropriation acts. In 1901, there was authorization for burial of Confederate veterans of Arlington. There's also a beautiful statue, Confederate statue of Arlington. U.S. Public Law 810 provided headstones for Confederate veterans. I can speak personally to this issue because there are two Confederate veterans from the Easton area that I'm very familiar with. One was Joseph Bridgeway, who was second-in-command of the Hunley submarine. He received a U.S. headstone, obviously for Confederate service, at Magnolia Cemetery. And also, there's a gentleman named Joyer who was his brother-in-law, and we did a service for him over in Easton at the family farm. I've also heard that the war was all about slavery, and I'd like to just address that issue to some degree. Many of you may not be familiar with the Corwin Amendment, which passed both houses of Congress in March of 1861. It stated that "No amendment shall be made to the Constitution which will authorize or give to Congress the power to abolish or interfere with any state with the domestic institutions thereof, including that of persons held to labor or service by the laws of said state." On March 4th, President Lincoln, in his inaugural address, stated, "I understand proposed amendment to the Constitution, which amendment, however, I have not seen has passed Congress, to the effect that the federal government shall never interfere with the domestic institutions of the state, including that of persons held to service. Holding such a provision to be now implied constitutional law, I have no objection to it being made express and irrevocable." So essentially, the states that didn't secede, there were seven states that had seceded at this time, the remainder had essentially approved a constitutional amendment to extend chattel slavery in perpetuity. This would seemingly defeat the premise that the war was fought over slavery. All that the South had to do was return and the states to ratify, and unfortunately, slavery would have been extended. Obviously, all of us are glad that slavery is over and that it's been done away with. As far as Maryland's concerned, Maryland's pro-Union legislature, as many of you know, those suspected of having Southern sympathies were arrested by the Lincoln administration so they couldn't vote for secession. But Maryland's pro-Union legislature, in fact, ratified the Corwin Amendment, January 10th, 1862, almost a year into the war, and they only rescinded it April 7th, 2014 in the General Assembly. Lastly, I'd just like to make the comment, getting prepared for today, I wanted to look into the situation as far as eastern shore slavery was concerned, and one unusual fact that I found, I was totally stunned by it, but the nation's first slaveholder was a gentleman named Anthony Johnson, who was a free Black. I never realized this, but he had a 300-acre property on Maryland's eastern shore known as Tony's Vineyard. So I think it would be beneficial if we could get off the racial component as far as the war is concerned. I think we place too much emphasis on race. There were Black slaveholders, there were Black Confederates, and I think it's important that we really engage ourselves in studying history. Just last comment, General Robert E. Lee, commanding general of the South, never owned a slave. However, General Ulysses S. Grant, commanding general of the Union forces, did, and his wife regularly visited him in the field of battle. With that, I thank you very much.
My name is David Yuen. I live on Chapel Road, Easton, Maryland. That statue's been there an awful long time, hadn't bothered anybody. Made me proud to go by there and see one of my ancestors' name on that statue monument. And I know, I feel offended if somebody wants to take it down. If you want to put up one to, to the northern troops that fought, that's fine, do it. Doesn't matter to me. We would live in a much greater atmosphere of harmony if you did. I'm sure a lot of people wouldn't oppose to that. But who was all over the United States, who was wanting to take down everything that's southern? You know, this, I feel like race relations right now are as bad as I ever remember them, except the burning of Cambridge in the 1960-61 era. If anybody needs a donation to put up a northern monument over there, so be it. Open up some ground there, bring your kids over and use it for a show and tell. Use it for education, but it is our history, whether we like it, whether we agree with it, or whether we don't. It is our history. And I'm not prejudiced. I got a sticker on my truck, says Ben Carson, and I've supported him and encouraged him to run. Got personal letters from him, and I think it's super great that we can all say that we're not prejudiced, if we're in fact not prejudiced. And this, to me, is not, is not a race thing unless the other faction, not, non-Williams speaking about, wants to make it so, and then so be it. But anyway, I hope all my Black friends here, you know, understand where I'm coming from. I have no, no problem with Black folks. I love them dearly. They're people that made me successful and still, still put money in my pocket, and I'd do anything in the world for them. But anyway, I hope, I hope we can work through this and we have a statue there. I want to thank you all for listening to me.
Thank you, Mr. Yuen.
How are you doing? My name is Michael Ingles. I live at 2942 Boswell Court here in Easton. I am a transplantee from fifteen years ago, however. I have three children, other children of the Easton children, my wife's from here, from Talbot County herself. And I come from Rockville, and the thing that strikes me is, they did the exact same thing in Rockville, or they attempted to. The statue that stands there was prominent in the town square until the 70s, was even featured in Hollywood movies. It was since moved behind some trees and some bushes, and they had nothing offensive on it whatsoever. When this mess started in South Carolina, it became spray painted, the city eventually covered it up with wood, and to this day, it stands there with, covered up. They had, the council held a somewhat kind of an impromptu meeting, much less organized than this, and they asked people, my parents still live there, what they thought about it, and almost everybody was against moving it. However, the council chairman, he himself had a political agenda, and he said it's moving no matter what, he'd already taken his to have it moved. Well, at this point, it still hasn't moved, because they already fifty percent cost overrun whatever it costs. We'll keep that in mind too, so what kind of tax dollars will be spent to move something of this nature? If it's even worth it. I think the political ship has sailed. People are still getting killed every day in this country, all over the place. Has nothing to do with the flag, has nothing to do with the monument. This has to do with bad people exist. To remove somebody's history because bad people exist, to me, is deplorable, and I urge you not to move the statue. Thank you.
I'm Glenn Baker. I live on Kemp Road in Easton. I heard a number tonight that is annoying to me again, Mr. Pack said, 331, 334, 350 Union soldiers. So in my three minutes, I'd like to focus on that a little bit. That number comes from something called the Veterans Census, which was an adjunct to the 1890 U.S. Census, where the census takers, some who were very well-trained and some didn't understand what they were about, went to people's doors and took the normal census information, children, et cetera, and then they said, "Were you a Union soldier?" Or were you, sometimes he didn't say that, they said, "Were you a soldier in the Civil War?" Because the pension department has asked, and Congress has granted, that we do a supplemental census at this time to identify people who may be pensioned or who may not be obtaining that, which includes whiffs and children of the whiffs. So imagine that you're a foreign hand in Talbot County, and people come to your door and say, "Were you in the Civil War?" And they say, "Well, why would you ask me that question?" And they say, "Well, we're looking for people to pay pensions to." So when you look at the documentation from that census, the rewritten documentation, which the Church of the Latter Day Saints has in, and has digitized it and has made photographic copies, which I have a couple of copies of one of the pages because I find it so interesting, the first thing that stands out is, there are seven people on those documents for Talbot County that later were recognized to have been Confederate soldiers, and they struck their name out, but their name continues to be counted in that 331 number that the Mormons count. There also were four of the people on our statue are in that count. Their name was William Low of McDaniel Town, they called it then, Robert Cloud Royal Oak Raisin Low of McDaniel Town, and William Porter of Whitman's. Fifty-eight names on the list where they asked a census taker to collect names, units served in, date entered, and date discharged. Fifty-eight of those names have nothing but a name. Now perhaps people have bad memories, and twenty-five years later, they couldn't remember their unit, or you couldn't remember what year they went in, but I find that pretty amazing. I think that's people who were hearing this story about a pension and said, "Yeah, I'll put my name on that list." Sixty additional names do not have a complete record. They either are missing a complete unit regiment number.
Go ahead and finish your thought, Mr. Day.
Sorry?
Go ahead and finish your thought.
Or they, they don't know when they served. So there were sixty-six things that served for one year that was confirmed, forty-four one to two years, seventy-eight two to three years, sixty-four three to four years, and four who actually served for four years, which brings the number, when you eliminate the people who had no data associated with their name, down to 256, keeping in mind that the Union had two drafts, and in the second draft, they went door-to-door looking for able-bodied people destined to the war, where our fellows on our plaque voluntarily left their homes and went south to support a cause that they believed in.
Thank you, Mr. Day.
Hi, how are you doing? I'm Paul Callahan from Oxford, also descendant of Darby Callahan, 1680, I think Chuck was also. I'm also, as a younger man, I was a Marine Corps officer, I served in the Marine Corps for eleven years. So as a military professional, I was absolutely amazed at what happened during the Civil War, what those men on both sides, Union, Confederate, did, they accomplished. Agony they suffered, many shot, nothing to feel the battle. Questions, why? Why did this happen? Six hundred and thirty thousand people died, eleven U.S. cities burned and destroyed. Sherman went to the South and burned and destroyed everything he can find, left women, men, children, without homes, without food. He burned the slave quarters as the plantation houses. In every war we have ever fought, there's always been a propaganda, there's always been a spin. Same thing here. Does anyone think our federal government doesn't spin things? They did. How did they justify this carnage? Slavery! Slavery! Unconstitutional awareness, even today. They can't show it was unconstitutional to see. The states believe they had their right. They can't even show it was constitutionally legal to send troops into the South. Prevent it. Could be an illegal war. Question we have with our folks is, did they serve honorably? Let's review that. Again, the whole idea of the Civil War was it's over slavery, we wanted to hijack that, therefore, everyone who fought for it's evil, what's bad, let's tear it down. Only thing I can do is quote Abraham Lincoln himself on this issue of why he fought this battle. My paramount objective in this struggle is to save the Union, and it's not either to save or destroy slavery. If I could save the Union without freeing any slave, I would do it, and if I could save it by freeing all slaves, I would do it. There's from Lincoln. Yes, the original seven states were hot-blood issue with slavery, and that's why it's seceded. That's what we get, it was over slavery. No, it was over secession. In fact, the second four states who seceded, their reason was because the North was sending an army into the South. That's unconstitutional, that's illegal, you can't do that. So let's go back 150 years and put ourselves in a position of our Talbot boys, our men. What would they see? They saw a federal government's armies going into the states, they saw the suspension of habeas corpus. They estimate ten to thirty thousand people were put in jail by the federal government without habeas without habeas corpus. That means no right to a trial, just go in jail. I didn't like what the government said, thrown in jail. Could be in North Korea, they do that. Three hundred, three hundred newspapers were shut down, editors thrown in jail. Our own judge, they came in, ripped him out of the courthouse, and pistol-whipped him. These men at the time, eighty-five years just after the Revolutionary War, saw this going on. Quite possibly in their minds, they said, "Our Constitution, what our forefathers fought for is being shredded, I'm gonna do something about it." And by God, what, only one in ten would actually stand up and do something. I reject the idea they fought for slavery. Do you really think our Talbot County men went to fight, say some southern plantation owner can have slaves, or some western territory can have slaves? I think they were smartly realizing Maryland was not part of Confederacy. That what happened to the South, it wouldn't affect slavery here. But what I do believe is that they saw what was going on with our Constitution, they saw all the freedoms that were being ruined, and that it doesn't matter what color you are, if we don't have a free society, we don't have anything. And I believe that's why these boys stood up and took arms. I think they, I think they served honorably, and I think that statue should stay. And I am really sorry that that symbol, that flag, which is hardly to see, you hardly see, is disrespectful to anybody. And I'm sorry, but I ask for some tolerance, and I ask that they look that statue in a different light, outside of slavery, and also potential fight for freedom and constitutional issues.
My name is Jerry Smith, Pardon the Voice. Gerald, for record, seventy-three oh two, Francis Street, Easton. First off, with respect, yet whatever, I was a little disappointed not to see or hear the Pledge of Allegiance before the opening of the ceremony, or the meeting this evening. That is disrespectful to our veterans out here. I am a veteran of a different war that nobody even knows about, called the Rastafarian War. It occurred in Baltimore City, all right? It was during the drug period. Right now in Baltimore City, there's well over two hundred black male souls dead, at the hands of black males. Not one Confederate flag has been draped over that black soul. The history that we have is being changed, and that's not the way that we're supposed to act in our, in our country. We are a horn of plenty. Some members out here might know what I mean by that, but we are a horn of plenty. And the idea that even the statues have caused such an issue is ridiculous. It's kinda hard to beat Ms. Lilly, and some of these other speakers, and I wasn't really gonna talk, I wasn't sure. But we forget about where we've been, where we've gone, where we've now arrived to. Those people that were killed in South Carolina, he was a white goof, he could have been a black goof. We know there are several of them in Baltimore City, and we can go countless numbers beyond. So, it's ridiculous to take our history away. And just like history states that we're supposed to, at an official hearing, or an official meeting, say the Pledge of Allegiance, and even our Lord's Prayer is all gone. Sorry if I offended anybody. I think that's about as far as I'm gonna go with that. I thank you for your time. Mr. Yorn, if you might want to know that council thought each of its meetings, but the Pledge of Allegiance...
And the prayer.
It wasn't tonight, sir.
We had a meeting across the street.
Where was ours tonight, ma'am? But this is a continuing, okay. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Well, you, you called me back. I wanna know how come our, our citizens were not respected. I'm done, sir. I've been trying to believe.
My name is Dale Foxwell, I live in Feelsburg, Maryland. No, I'm not a resident of Talbot County, I have worked in, around, and worked for Talbot County various times in the past. Couple things I'd like to say, just in reference to the monument. In nineteen thirteen, members of both armies gathered in Gettysburg for the fiftieth anniversary of the reunion in the Battle of Gettysburg. There were many concerns initially about whether there were going to be any issues, because it was both federal and Confederate veterans coming to that.
This time, let me counter against you, Mr. Firecrow.
That's a really accurate one. As it turned out, there were no incidents at that reunion, there was a lot of incidents of both federal and Confederate robbery throughout the entire reunion. Twenty-five, twenty-five years later, nineteen thirty-eight, the reunion was repeated with the same type of incidents. So nineteen thirteen reunion, our president at that time, President Woodrow Wilson, was one of the speakers. His words, "We have found one another again as brothers and comrades in arms, enemies no longer, generous friends rather. Our battles long past, the quarrel forgotten, except that we shall not forget the splendid valor." Unquote. That was the words of our President Woodrow Wilson at the time, concerning the valor of the men of both armies and what they had done in response to their beliefs. If those men who lived through that conflict could come back together, shake one another's hands, become model citizens, who many of the names on that monument represent for this county, why do we have to have this type of issue now? We should be able to look at that regardless of which side we're looking at it from, and recognize what it represents as to the people that it's trying to honor. And hopefully not be offensive to others. All of us are really only offended at what we choose to be offended by. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Barbara Denton, I live at seventy-seven ninety-three Woodman Circle in Easton. I just came tonight because I don't believe in history being removed. If men got together and paid for a statue to honor their ancestors and their relatives, that statue should stay there. If people want to honor their Union ancestors, or the whole county wants to honor the Union ancestors, then I would be happy to give money for another statue to be built at the courthouse. But to move a statue and show our children that we think we can change history by removing a statue is wrong. That's all I have to say.
My name is David McQuay, I was born and raised on Tillman, Maryland, fifth generation Come here this evening to say good evening to you all, and I have a relative on the statue in the courthouse yard. Concerning the Talbot Boys statue, whether it be a year ago, five years ago, or fifty years ago, the monument that people want to move was, might have been a non-issue, you know. Many people born and raised here today don't even know that it exists, and for that matter, probably couldn't care about it. There are a small group in this county that want to move the statue. Some of them, I think are not so much interested in the statue as they are dreading up the issue of slavery and racism. The, this is an ongoing thing with them, I think the Charleston church shooting gave them an opportunity here to attack the statue, and with every opportunity that presents itself here in Talbot County, I think they'll be right back up here again. That's my personal opinion. I think the whole statue issue has been blown way out of proportion. There are many other issues in the county that need the county council's attention that are far and away more important than this. It's my hope that it's rashed on intelligence adults, you will view the effort to move the statue for what it is and just leave it there. If you're interested, you might look into Billy and Odom honoring the black and white residents here that served on the council, I mean, served in service in the, I mean, I'm sorry, Civil War. I'd be glad to make a donation toward that monument. If you decide that the statue be moved, it would be my wish that you could approach the group that wants it moved, and let them finance the project and not use taxpayer funds for the movement. Thank you.
Good evening, council, members of the audience. I'm a student of history. I love history. My family has fought in every war that this country's been in, all the way back to the Revolutionary War, and I had the honor to fight a war for my country, this myself. I was a gunner sergeant in the United States Marine Corps, I'm sorry, I skipped my address. I am at twelve oh eight Parks Road, Fishing Creek, Maryland. This does hurt me to see this monument moved, because it is our history. I agree that, you know, if we do put another monument out there for the Union soldiers, I have no problem with that at all, and I'm not from this county, but my family fought side by side with these men from Talbot County, and I would be willing to donate a contribution to it as well. Everybody sees that statue out there as just a piece of bronze. Just to give everybody a little quick piece of history, I'll go with a quote from Colonel James Wallace, who was the commanding general of the Maryland Northern Eastern Shore Unit. He said, "On July the third, eighteen sixty-three, in a little town in Pennsylvania named Gettysburg, the Maryland Confederate Eastern Shore Unit ran into the Maryland Northern Eastern Shore Unit and was cut to pieces. And after the battle, his men went out on field and sorrowfully and carefully tended to their good friends and close acquaintances." This was finally. My great-great-grandfather was on the top of Caltz Hill on July the third, and my great-great uncle was at the bottom, fighting his way up. So this is a very touching point to me. That sergeant, the color sergeant out there, he carried a flag, I forgot his name, I think it's Tillman, I believe, I'd have to research some of my other books. He was carrying the flag up, he died, he got shot and died. His cousin was carrying the flag for the Northern Unit, and he survived. There was a little black dog that led the charge up Caltz Hill. The dog was killed, too. But when they found that dog, he was curled up next to a Confederate soldier and was given a burial with full military honors. This is a cap that the Confederate Unit wore. They wore one of the best uniforms out of all the Confederate soldiers, they took a lot of pride in that. I agree with what General Robert A. Lee said. He did not believe in slavery and did not believe in breaking up the Union. And that's the same way I feel. Thank God there is no slavery today, and the Union is still together. And I believe if the Confederacy did win, we'd probably be speaking with a British accent right now. Because my belief is that the British was trying to get their way back into, in the door, especially down in the South, like you did with the War of, in the Revolutionary War, excuse me, and War of eighteen twelve. So, thank God we're all still Americans.
Thank you, sir.
One more thing I'd like to say is that the Confederate flag, the stars and bars, I am so sorry that so many idiots dishonor that flag. It was not meant to be dishonored.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
My name is Phil Foster, I'm a recent transplant to Talbot County, I didn't move here until the sixth grade, but I did, I donated to Mr. Sherman. I've also served on this body that is conducting the hearing. When I told somebody what I intended to say, they were very surprised, because I was the first, was on the first Central Committee to appoint an African-American to a public office. I was the state's attorney who prosecuted Les Crossburner in Talbot County. I'm not real comfortable with some of the comments that have been made about, that tended to seem to be refighting the Civil War. It's over, and that's really not the issue here. I was also most to the point, the deciding vote in favor of the Frederick Douglass statue. We were split two to two, and they weren't changing, either of them, Mr. Duncan can bear me out back there. And so it fell to me, and, and there were a group of veterans, and some of them were African-American veterans, they were very emotional about the courthouse lawn, about what they perceived to be as hurtful to them if the, if the statue of somebody who did not fight in a war went on the lawn. And that was a very legitimate feeling, just like some of the people here who have those feelings that are offended by the Confederacy, it's a legitimate feeling. But it was more important, I think, to honor our history, and Frederick Douglass was a key part of our history. I had read in the newspaper that there was no linkage of the two statues, that's simply not true. We were approached and told, we have no problem with the Confederate statue remaining there. Because it's there, that makes the argument that we make all the stronger to put a statue of Frederick Douglass. When it was suggested, well suppose, in order to satisfy the veterans, we just have a Union statue there, that's not what we want, we wanted the statue of Frederick Douglass. And so I voted in favor of that, and I've never, ever regretted it. And every time I walk up those steps to the courthouse and I see both those statues there, I think that is an appropriate balance, and it depicts what Talbot County was in the Civil War, it was divided. Now, who's on that statue? I've only had time to research the general officers on that statue, but since nobody's really mentioned it, let me do it if I have enough time left. There's a General Tillman on the statue, he was an Army officer in the, in the U.S. Army, who at the time of the Civil War, like many officers from the South, resigned his commission, took a commission with the Confederate Army, he died at Vicksburg, in one of the battles of Vicksburg that preceded the fall of Vicksburg. There's a General Kobe, it says on the statue that he's the Surgeon General of the Confederacy. I think that's probably not accurate. What he actually was, was a medical inspector of the Confederate hospitals, but it's still quite an achievement. And in fact, one of the things that he did, there was a doctor named Dean who developed a procedure for treating people with broken jaws, which you can imagine in hand-to-hand combat would be a frequent injury. And it was this doctor Dean that developed the procedure, but it was General Kobe who put it in all the Confederate hospitals. Eventually, that procedure got across the lines to the Northern Hospitals, and when Secretary of State Seward was attacked and his jaw was broken, that was the procedure that was used in order to treat him. One of my favorite stories though is General Winder. General Winder was apparently an extraordinarily courageous person who fought with St. Mel Jackson's Brigade, and in the ballot campaign and other places, but he, he ended up dying near Culpeper, Virginia. General Winder was so sick that his doctor told him he could not go into battle. And so he disregarded the doctor, he couldn't walk or ride, so he had himself carried into battle in his ambulance, which of course you can imagine made a terrific target for the enemy artillery, which eventually found it. He just, he got out of the ambulance at one point to reposition troops and redirect artillery fire, and an enemy shell found him and he died there as well. You've already heard about Joseph Ridgeway, who was the second-in-command on the Hunley, that's the only submarine to sink an enemy ship in time of war, I think prior to World War I. Didn't make out so well itself, because it sunk too, but anyway, they have, they dug it up and they're studying it. But the most important guy on there is Admiral Buchanan, he would have, they would have pronounced it Buckhannon. He was in, went into the Navy in the Mexican War, served in the reduction of Veracruz and the shelling of that. After that, he went to Japan with Admiral Perry, Commodore Perry, pardon me. He was believed to be the first American military person to set forth, to set his foot on Japanese soil. Then he became the first superintendent of the Naval Academy, the United States Naval Academy, therefore was responsible for developing the curriculum and the rules of discipline and so forth in the academy. He was the only admiral in the Confederate Navy, there were four positions authorized, but the only one was ever filled. He commanded the Ironclad Virginia in the, in the... He commanded the Ironclad Virginia in the Monitor Mary Mac. Mary Mac was another name of the Virginia. He, the first day, till he got himself shot. And eventually recovered, ended up down in Mobile Bay, and commanded the only other ironclad to ever be in a battle during the Civil War. So he was involved in both of those interesting battles. Okay, and one more thing. After the war, he was president of the Agricultural College of Maryland. And so I think it's important to understand, if you take this down, this is history. This is important. Some of those people could have deserved a statue on their own. And I urge you not to remove that statue.
McTrom, 202 Third Street, Oxford, Maryland. Been a resident of Maryland for about twenty-five years as of January, and a resident of Talbot County for just about a year. I've been a lifelong student of the Civil War, and I continually learn. I've taught some in Anne Arundel County. And I've been very much involved learning about the Civil War here in Talbot. Part of teaching the history of the Civil War in central Maryland was learning about the Civil War statewide. I don't think you could really learn or really know the Civil War in Talbot County without knowing the Civil War throughout the state of Maryland as well. I'm not going to get into that tonight, but my point is that I think that from the comments, many of the comments that I've heard, I feel that what has happened in this county is probably something of an aberration back in nineteen thirteen, fifteen, seventeen, when these statues were built and completed. I was at the statue in Chestertown, the Civil War statue in Chestertown this past week. And I think that's, you know, a beautiful portrayal, a fair portrayal, of both sides. This one, one large statue with Civil War Union soldiers on one side, Civil War Confederates on the other. Really beautifully done and fair to everybody. You can't do that here anymore, but I do feel it's reasonable to honor the Union soldiers who fought. However many exactly there were, we don't know. But that's something to research when a statue is done. That's fair. I think that the Talbot County, the statue, the Talbot Boys statue is a kind of a distortion of history because it doesn't, it only tells the Confederate side. What's fair is fair. I think that, you know, I, for one, honor the service, even though I don't think it was, you know, a good idea, and I think it was dedicated to slavery. I honor the service of the Confederate soldiers. I don't have any problem with that, really. But only because of the lack of recognizing the Union soldiers who fought at least as bravely in most cases. And in terms of black soldiers, I think that they took bigger chances in a lot of cases than Confederate soldiers. But the point is that I think that has to happen. Unfortunately, there's also the issue of the Confederate flag. The Confederate, the issue of the Confederate flag has changed in the last year in this whole country. We don't, I don't think we can deny that. I think that that has happened. It's really unfortunate. It's sad. But the Confederate flag has been hijacked for a long, long time by really bad racist elements in this country that are hurting the country. And what happened in Charleston a couple of months ago has had a reaction throughout the South. I lived in Georgia for ten years, and I think that there's a major reaction there. The University of Mississippi, of all places, has moved to take down the Confederate flag on the campus of the University of Mississippi. That is earth-shattering.
Ole Miss.
Ole Miss. I didn't realize it was already down on the campus of Mississippi State, right? But it is down there now. That is, that is an impact that I don't think that we can just ignore in Talbot County because we cherish the Talbot Boys. Listen, I understand that. But my sense is, and I brought a photograph, I'll give to you in my research, of the Talbot Boys statue in nineteen fifteen. The original statue was put up there without the boy and the flag. And I think that that's a very tasteful thing, the way it was done. I think that was probably the right thing to do at that time. Some, you know, the additional flag and the boy were put on top. I think that, in my view, I would definitely consider putting up a Union statue, just the same size, the same everything, right next to it or in front of it somewhere, right there, fairly sized to reflect that both sides, men fought and died and sacrificed greatly. And that Talbot County was not a complete secessionist county by any means. It was cut right down the middle, and that's a fair statement. The other thing is that...
Richard Potter, six zero seven seven, the Miami Metro. And I'm also representing the NAACP as well. For the record, Frederick Douglass statue does not represent a battle, and I'll admit that. In my daily reading assignments that I do each day, I happen to view the Chronicle of Higher Education. And I ran across an article, October twenty-sixth, two thousand and fifteen, "Ole Miss Takes Down State Flag Because of Its Confederate Emblem." As I began to read through the article, it stated that Dr. Moore Stokks, the president, stated in a news release that "I understand the flag represents tradition and honor to some, but to others, the flag means that some members of the Ole Miss family are not welcomed or valued." In August, in August of this year, the University of Texas at Austin moved the statue of Jefferson Davis off its campus ground. As I began to read that article, I went to another article that was dated October the twenty-sixth, two thousand and fifteen. "Bowden Ends Confederate Heritage Award Like Many Still Offered by U.S. Service Academies." Bowden Board of Trustees voted to cease giving an academic award named for Jefferson Davis, the president of the Confederacy. Dr. Clayton Ross, its president, said it's inappropriate for Bowden College to bestow an annual award that continues to honor a man whose mission was to preserve an institutionalized slavery. Then, as I got finished with that one, I went to Rockville, Maryland, and looked at what they had done. And then, as I began to look, I saw where the county executive Ike Leggett decided that it was time to take it down. He called for it to come down, and ideally as soon as possible. So with that being stated, the NAACP's recommendation and stance still remains the same, to remove the Talbot Boys statue and replace it in a more appropriate setting, and two, to commission a group of citizens who can reasonably discuss the erection of a new statue that represents the Confederates and Union. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Alex Borrell. I'm at sixty-six forty-eight Peach Blossom Point.
Harry Henkel. That's okay, you can stay there.
I'm at sixty-six forty-eight Peach Blossom Point, out on Bailey's Neck. And I've been working on John Wesley Methodist Episcopal Church on Oxford Road. I'm not here representing the Preservation Society, but it has some bearing on what's going on here. The John Wesley Church was an abolitionist church founded in eighteen thirty. In eighteen fifty, it had, the congregation was about fifty-fifty, black and white. And I'm very familiar that Talbot did have a strong Confederate or secessionist movement in the county. But I'd like to point out that there was a very strong abolitionist movement in Talbot County dating back to the early eighteen hundreds, which John Wesley Church represents part of. And you've heard some stories about Confederate soldiers. I'd like to tell you a couple of stories about Union soldiers. On the courthouse steps, exactly thirty feet away from that statue, in August of eighteen sixty-three, the very last slave auction in the state of Maryland was held on our courthouse steps. Also, in August of eighteen sixty-three, my great-great-great uncle was in Talbot County recruiting black slaves to join the Union Army. And we heard some statistics earlier I disagree with. There are more than two hundred black soldiers who joined the Union Army from Talbot County. These were all enlistees. There were seventy or eighty conscripted white soldiers who came from Talbot County. One of the black Union soldiers was a member of our church. His name was Moses Smallwood. He was married in the church in eighteen sixty-three. He joined the Union Army in eighteen sixty-three. He went off to battle and was killed in the Battle of Petersburg in eighteen sixty-four. He has a memorial to Moses Smallwood in Petersburg. I'd love for him to have some sort of memorial in Talbot County.
Harry Henkel, one one two four one, Longwoods Road.
Our house dates back to eighteen seventy. My wife and I pretty much have everything we have tied up in it. We're trying to keep it there. What's really great about our county is we've got a lot of history, a lot of places we can stop and look at the signs. Unionville, for instance. I often ride through there, and I'll stop once in a while, read through that. Tench Tillman, there's one on Wexley Road, I believe. Anywhere we go, there's a marker for the Mason-Dixon line on Route fifty, down towards Cambridge. "It would be a shame to move the statue. It would be darn near impossible to move it intact." Chuck, you're a contractor. Can you envision the piece of equipment if we pick it up and keep it together? I don't think it exists. Plus, when they put it in there, it's like they didn't have the trees that are out in the lawn of courthouse. So something's got to get broken or messed up to move it. Everyone fought hard over the debate of Frederick Douglass. Would have made sense for Frederick Douglass to have been at the library here. They offered a room to study Frederick Douglass. But that wasn't good enough to murder it on the courthouse lawn to die. The idea of putting a statue to the Union soldiers from the county probably makes sense, but somebody's got to fund it. Most of my friends seem to think the fairest way not to put it on the council or anyone in this room, put it to referendum. Let us vote on it. You'll probably get the biggest voters' broader turnout we've ever had in our county. That's all I've got.
Oxford Road, two seven three five zero, Oxford Road. I've been here since nineteen forty-six. I learned to talk in Philadelphia, but I'm with, sorry. I, to follow what Alex Borrell said and the gentleman about the Caltz Hill and the other gentleman who mentioned the Chestertown monument. Moses Smallwood got married, as Alex told us, before he shipped out. I don't think that Alex gave the dimension of the idea of, when they were recruited, they were, their owner would receive compensation. The enslaved person who volunteered to fight for three years received one hundred dollars and went off on a boat to learn how to fight. And the owner, who had no choice in the matter, was given three hundred dollars. I've also heard that if he'd been a bad actor, he didn't get anything. They just said, "I'm sorry, you're done." And now Moses Smallwood's wife, it turns out, used to live in my house. So, you know, it, these are things that, because we live in this county and we do talk with each other, and I'm working with that church, and we're trying very hard to, all these sort of global things, to really see what really happened, you know, men and women in this county. And Moses was killed, and she went to collect a widow's pension. So she was right, you know, she went from being an enslaved person to being like, "Cool, she's in Baltimore and she's on a pension," and, you know, I mean, I don't mean to be silly, but there were, we're not hearing the whole story. To continue on with what's going to be really happening, I think every single person here, I think, has said that they would be happy with a Union monument. But I don't understand why still some people are angry. Every single person says that's a good idea. I would really like to seriously take it a step farther and have a special monument for the United States Color troops. We may find out, you know, the military keeps very good records. These things are really right on the internet. We may find there are more of them than there are of either side otherwise. And there's a very lovely monument up in Chestertown. They call it Monument Park. They have a monument to every war you can think of. And they have that very lovely one that was mentioned from the Civil War. And right next to it is a beautiful granite obelisk for the United States Color troops. It has lovely words about valor and courage and duty and dignity. And that was put up in nineteen ninety-nine. So gee, we didn't care about it, but it is definitely there. And I'd like to say that the Chestertown people really are getting it right. I don't know how to catch up, but that Civil War monument is shiny granite on both sides with the names of the people there. And two of my family names are on both sides. So I fill that. Now, at the bottom, always makes me cry, and I could cry anyway. They have this little poem. It's got two lines on one side and two lines on the other side. Let me see if I can get it right. It's "Under the sod," I always go the wrong way. "Under the sod, blue and the gray awaiting alike the judgment day." Go to the other side. "Under the sod, the gray and the blue reach to his sense of duty true." So they were not being judged now. They were saying, "Here it is, let God sort it out." So I would vote to do some research. We have plenty of facilities right here to put a program where people, kids or adults, learn who the Color troops were and give some thought, maybe have a school competition as to how to put that, something like the Vietnam Wall, where you just have everybody's name. Thank you.
I'm Rabbi Peter Hyman, one oh one West Earl Avenue, Easting. This is not about revisionist history. This is not about denying history. And you can twist the facts any way you want, and you can aggrandize symbols in any way you want. But be clear, honored council. Be clear. Monuments and flags and symbols, they communicate silently. They send a message. The issue is not whether we have a statue to the north or the south or to the east or the west. The issue is, what is the message being communicated by the statue on, not private property? What is the message being communicated and sent on public property? On governmental property? What is the message that is understood by that statue? That has CSA on it, that has a folded and subtle, but nevertheless present, flag that represented, and I too am a student of history, and I'm a real student of history. I read books. It communicates... Who said that?
Rabbi.
After. It communicates a message that irrespective of the spin, talked about sedition, it represents a human attempt at slavery and the perpetuation of a system that was dehumanizing. And that's the message that is sent by that statue. It is not a message of attempting to harmonize equally with Frederick Douglass. That's a difference, that's a different message totally. I would just remind you that messages are communicated by the statues and the symbols and the emblems that we embrace.
I have a relative on the statue. To me, it is a personal issue. And I also live in the past and I live in the present. I collect history. I live in a museum for that much. My house has artifacts of all kinds of wars. From the Revolutionary War up through World War II, Vietnam relics. I don't think I go much beyond that. I have a Nazi flag and a handgun brought back by a soldier. It was a very prominent member of this town and contributed a lot. He was also one of the first through the concentration camps. I have that. I can look at that, hold that, feel that, and understand things that went on then. I look at what I hear what the man just said, and the flag, it's a symbol. It's a symbol of a time gone by, and it's a symbol of being used today to put hate forth. Well, it wasn't intended to... Well, it wasn't intended to put hate forth when it was put up, but now we also have a lot of other symbols. We have the Black Lives Matter. We have the way the blacks dressed, with pants hanging down, and the hoodies and the whatnot. And if you want to talk about the fight of fear, if you want to talk about inciting fear, look at Baltimore City, 50 miles northwest. They're killing each other up there five to six a week.
Mr. Walter.
Five to six, well, when they respond, I'll respond. I have freedom. When they're killing five to six a week up there, there's something to be afraid of. Not a hunk of brass in front of a courthouse, put up 100 years ago to honor 150-year-old war. Why don't we concentrate on trying to fix the future, instead of worrying about the past? The very first effort to de-humiliate the Confederacy was to take the house in DC and bury the Union, or the Confederate dead there, the Union dead there, the Union dead it was, to dishonor that house so that the man could never live there again. That house belonged to Robert E. Lee, and they did that to humiliate him, so he couldn't go back home again. And now it is the most sacred ground in the entire country, holds our most sacred war dead. It's the highest honor you can have is to be buried at Arlington Cemetery. That's what happens when you try to eradicate history and erase and just try to discriminate against it. It's time to leave this thing alone. It's a part of our history, our heritage, put up a long time ago. And people claiming that it incites fear and all that, they're trying to bring up an issue to divide this country even further. It's time this country starts healing, and starts fixing its current problems, and leave issues of 100 years ago alone. And I've just about, you know, I, I, this is a hill I'm almost worth dying for. My family's on that statue, it's my great-great-great-grandfather on there, and he lived in this county, that land he owned, want to know where it was, and he's buried in trap. We, we need to look at this thing, and we need to think, are we just going to rewrite all of history? Are we going to take down what, what happened? The Vietnam War. Some fought in the Vietnam War, some thought the Vietnam War was a big mistake. We have a memorial to that. Those Vietnam soldiers, those guys are, have the same exact veteran status as the fellows on that Confederate statue. To take down that statue because that was an unpopular war today, no, that's the same thing as taking down the Vietnam War, because that's an unpopular war with slop. We can't just decide what we like and when we like it, and take things apart, because our attitudes change from day to day. We need some consistency in this world, and we need to fix what's wrong and go forward.
My name is Dick Durin. I live 301 South Morris Street in Oxford. A lot of years ago, I was a cadet at the Citadel. The Citadel is known in the South as the birthplace of the Civil War. They fired the first shots of the Civil War when they fired upon the Star of the West, which was a resupply ship sent to, to supply Fort Sumter. I grew up there, we waved the Confederate flag at football games, it was part of the uniform in many cases, and, and it was sort of accepted. But over the years, I've come to understand, and I think most people, that the Confederate flag represented hate, it didn't really represent what America's all about. And I think that the Talbot Boys should be remembered, I think they, they deserve a place, but it's not on public land, it's not where taxpayers are, are paying for that statue to exist. And I think that, my own position is that it is appropriate that that statue be moved. I don't think it's, it makes any sense to have, try to have some balance on the, on the grounds of the courthouse. The fact is, the statue should be moved to a place that is on private property, where the, where it's appropriate to show, and I appreciate you.
My name is Kelly Malone, I live at 106 Sycamore Avenue, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak this night, I hadn't, hadn't planned on it. I just wanted to say that the good news that I've heard out of this public conversation is that there does seem to be majority consensus that it is a good idea to have a fair representation of history on the courthouse lawn. And I would absolutely concur with that, and would urge the council to engage in a process moving forward of how that could happen. The other thing that I would like to say, because I, I have to say it, I think we have had a lot of revisionist history at this public hearing tonight, primarily from folks who are arguing that the war was not about slavery. I think most history books in our country would say that the Civil War was about slavery, a, a big deal of it was. So I had to say that, to support representation of history that is truthful and fair. And I think if we can focus on the consensus that I've heard, that we should have a monument that represents the lives of those who fought in Talbot County for the Union side, we need to, we need to move forward on that. So thank you.